Ready, Kiel?
Yes.
It's nine o'clock. We will call the meeting of Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. We'll also be meeting at 9:15 as Lincoln County Board of Equalization. Both meetings following the Open Meetings Act as amended, a copy of which is posted at the entry of the room. Our first order of business is to offer prayer. Commissioner Woodruff, please.
Join me if you will. Father God, as we gather today, let us give thanks for your many blessings. In this month of celebrating our freedom, let us remember and also revere those who fought to gain and those who serve to maintain our liberties. Please protect them as they protect us. We pray for those harmed in the assassination attempt in Pennsylvania. We stand against the kind of evil that has presented in our world. Help us to not grow weary from all the strife. You, Lord, are our refuge in times of trouble. Help us be courageous and find the confidence and the strength to stand united and shake our fist of resolve in the face of this evil. We say these things in your name and ask for your guidance in achieving our goals. Amen.
Thank you. Entertained a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting held on Lincoln County Board of Commissioners, July 2, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve those minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting held on July 8, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, Tammy.
Woodruff.
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 Next item is to consider the claims and treasures receipts. As presented, I think we had a copy of those.
Move to approve the claims and treasures receipts as presented.
Second of a motion. The second, do we have any discussion?
I would just like to point out the interest on investments that our treasurer's office has been working so hard for our county.
Thank you. Any other comments? Roll call, Wood.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Next item is to receive an order filed, the fee reports submitted by the county clerk, register of deeds, and the county sheriff.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to receive an order filed, fee reports submitted by the county clerk in the amount of $1,146, and a register of deeds in the amount of $22,065.94, and the county sheriff in the amount of $2,585.12.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Next item is to authorize the chairman to sign the right-of-way application submitted by Hershey Cooperative Telephone Company. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Jason Schultz, Mr. Lieutenant.
Morning, Jason.
So this permit's just a short section, a line from Hershey Co-op over there in the Antelope and Lamont area. Looks like extension and just a couple of services, so.
And last, my typical question, you know what it's going to be without me even asking because Mr. Brunson isn't here and I know that we wouldn't want to have that conversation. You spoke with them about getting in a digital thing.
Yep.
And they're going to do that right afterwards, so.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate that, Jason.
Yep.
Thank you.
You have a check here for that, so.
Okay. It's like we do have a check with their application. I'm guessing you have no problems with that.
Nope.
I'd entertain a motion if you're so inclined.
That was a good point.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we authorize you to sign the right-of-way application submitted by Hershey Cooperative Telephone Company.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, Wood, please, Tammy.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Next one is to authorize the chairman to sign the legal contract with Marty Charcinski for legal services for the county.
Somehow magically, it's been a whole year again. Marty stopped in. I do have a little calendar reminder that these things come up about this time of year. In the 45 to 90 seconds that he and I spent talking about this, he agreed to do it at the same rate as last year, which is much better than inflation, so I would recommend the board sign it. His service is still very valuable.
Chairman, I would authorize you to sign the contract for legal services with Marty Charcinski with the note that it has not changed in price.
Second. Good news. Thanks, Marty. Questions or discussion? I will just comment. I've had comments over the years, not just last year, but for several years, on the job that Marty does, and especially with some view on all of his work, so that's good to hear. Any other discussion? Roll call, Wood, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Aye. Next order of business is to receive an order filed, the condition of the treasury. It's a six-month report from January 1, 2024 to June 30 of 2024, submitted by the county treasurer. I think we had that in our packet, and I guess the good news is it was the last six months and we end up with some money, so that's good.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we receive an order filed, the condition of the treasury's six-month report, January 1, 2024 to June 30 of 2024, as submitted by the county treasurer, and you sign.
We all sign.
We all sign, and we sign.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, Wood, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Next item is to authorize the chairman to sign the agreement to, it's for a contribution agreement to a Dormi Network LLC. I think we had that in our packages, and I would entertain a motion, the same.
Chairman, I would authorize you to sign the amendment to the contribution agreement with Dormi Network LLC regarding the overlay on North Maxwell.
Second. I have a question, Tyler. I know we talked about this, I thought last week or the week before, and had agreed to go ahead and do that. Is this just the contract that?
Yes, this is simply the paperwork catching up with the revised estimate that the board authorized two, three weeks ago. I had, I actually had Dormi draft this, and so it took Alex a little while to get it here, but this is what he came up with.
Okay. I was, Shellco gave their price to Sampson, which I didn't realize Sampson was involved with the new road, but.
Well, Sampson's the general out there at that project.
Okay, so, okay, so this was part of that?
Yes, they had Shellco doing their parking lots anyway.
Thank you very much for clarifying that. Other questions or discussion?
When will this work be done? Do we know that, Jason?
Questions, comments? Roll call, Tammy, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Woodruff.
They can't, or Michaela, what was the burger? I thought it was Laura. Where's the cowboy? From 15, 20 years ago. PRC.
What's her last name?
Burger, Warren Burger.
Not familiar?
Terry, do you remember?
I'm pretty sure that's a female, though, spelled that way.
But what's that similar name? I think her Michaela would go to. Again, you all got some stuff left in your hearts. So, like, this week we have that.
Yeah.
Did they just keep those one thing here?
So, I asked them to do that spreadsheet that Jason formulated, and Becky asked for it to be turned into her office twice a year, so, end of June. I know Jody.
Obviously, there's not an express date on it.
On the car, once you get the car?
No. Okay, that's all I was curious.
Also, there is a date on the receipt that they send in, but they don't worry about that. So, if we accidentally get one turned in a little late, they still give us the credit.
They're not fussy about that date?
Nope. I have, I found one that was passed by months and sent it in, and they honor it. I think they just scan that little barcode and go. I will send a reminder, though, Joe, thanks for asking, to the other two departments that do those.
Okay.
To get that spreadsheet updated and filed.
Thank you. It is 9:30. Our next agenda item is a public hearing to discuss consideration on an application by Brian and Heather Cox for a conditional use permit to allow a mother-in-law quarters, second dwelling, on property located at 10-928 South Whispering Hills Road. The property is located in an R Rural Estates residential district and described as Tracks 8 and 9, Whispering Hills subdivision, a part of the east half of Section 4 Township, 12 North Range, 31 West of 6 PM, Lincoln County, Nebraska. Good morning, Judy. I am going to open the public meeting at this time. Please identify yourself and...
Judy Clark, Lincoln County Planning Administrator. And what you have in front of you, again, is a public hearing for a conditional use permit to allow a second dwelling on a residential site. You should have all received a copy of the review comments attached to that as a resolution that was passed by the Lincoln County Planning Commission, and then a location map showing the location of the property, and then attached to that is a site plan that's drawn by the applicant. So, the applicant generally states that they plan to set up a mobile home as a second dwelling on their son's property. It is a large acreage, I believe about 39 acres, and should not have a detriment to the neighboring property values. Again, July 9, 2024, Lincoln County Planning Commission unanimously passed a resolution recommending approval of the proposed project. Also on there is a proposed motion to approve the application and a proposed motion to deny. The individuals that are proposing to set the second dwelling are in the audience if you have any questions. Otherwise, I'd be happy to answer some also.
I would ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to address this issue, whether for or against, or make any comments, just please come forward, sign in, and identify yourself, and feel free to do so. Would also mention to the board that they are welcome to call anyone if they would like, if they have questions with the applicants or Judy. Leave this open for just a short period of time more.
We can ask questions during this time?
If you would like to ask questions of the applicants, I think, before we take our action. And then I'll close the public hearing portion. We'll have more discussion then. That's okay.
That works.
All right. Last chance.
Mr. Chairman, before you close the hearing, would you please receive into the record a certified copy of the Lincoln County Comprehensive Plan?
Thank you, Counselor. We will receive into the record a certified copy of the Lincoln County Comprehensive Plan. Thank you for that. Okay, we'll be closing the public hearing at this time. And we're going to open up debate for the board. I would entertain a motion one way or the other so that we can get this on the table for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the conditional use application by Brian and Heather Cox for a conditional use permit to allow a mother-in-law's quarters as a second dwelling on property located at 10-928 South Whispering Hills Road, Lincoln County, Nebraska, and all elements of the application are complied with.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
You've got to finish that.
You got to finish that.
Go down to the base.
Oh, right here? Okay.
And then I'll say...
Ah, for the conditions. Thank you. The application complies with current Lincoln County zoning regulations, the application complies with current Lincoln County subdivision regulations, three, the application is in conformance with the current Lincoln County Comprehensive Plan and Lincoln County zoning map.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I do have a question, probably for Judy.
Judy, would you come up, please?
So, will there need to be another septic system put on the property for the, that will service just the new mobile home?
I think their intent is to put an additional septic system on there. It's not required. I mean, they could tap in, but that's for a certified septic installer to require, which is required in our land use permit, that they have a certified septic installer do that.
And the current septic is located where on that property?
Well, the one that they're proposing is right by the mobile home. You can see that on their proposal. The other one, I cannot tell you. I would assume it's going to be pretty close to the house. It's not indicated here. But it does appear that they are putting in an additional septic, which is normally the case, because when septics are installed, they're usually installed to fit the existing structure.
Yeah, it would appear that that'd be quite a ways to tap into an existing septic if it was indeed close to the home, the primary home. That was the only question I have.
Any other?
At the public hearing for the Planning Commission, were there anybody that showed up to speak against?
No, I did receive one phone call from a neighbor, Dever, I believe was their last name. They just said that they were against it because they didn't want to see any additional residential structures in the area. But no, nobody attended the public hearing.
Okay. For the questions, if not, roll call vote, please.
Luler?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Thanks, Judy.
Thank you, folks. It is 9:40. Our next item is an update on the county insurance renewal. Mr. Patero, would you come forward, please? Identify yourself.
Morning, Tanner.
Morning, Tanner.
I really apologize. My wife just had an accident in Denver, and this is my daughter calling, so you can just...
No, please.
One sec.
You're excused. Been a good growing season for your rodents this year.
Could use some more rain now. Sorry.
No, don't play sorry at all.
She got clipped by a semi. She okay? Yeah, they're okay. The cop was there. It was not helpful, and told my wife that she was at fault, even though she was completely past a semi, and he clipped her in the right rear. But we'll get through that. So, now they have a bumper hanging off, and they're...
But they're both okay.
Everybody's okay.
Good deal.
Everybody's okay. The next question is, did you get a hold of your insurance agent?
I don't know that. I don't know who to call. Yeah, so sorry for being a little distracted.
No worries.
I guess the easiest thing to review is comparison. If everybody doesn't have one, I brought extra.
Okay.
So, as, to no surprise, and we've had discussions before, property insurance in Nebraska continues to be a large dumpster fire, I guess is the nice word for it. Rates continue to skyrocket, and carriers continue to lose money. We are seeing carriers exit Nebraska, like Nationwide currently doesn't want to write business in Nebraska. I mean, they haven't announced that, but they're doubling or tripling rates. So, Travelers is, they still want to write municipalities. The kicker of that is they just have to take property rate. Everybody's taking property rate. You're seeing a lot of it. Travelers and all other carriers are also forcing a higher wind hail deductible. So, the biggest difference in the renewal this year is Travelers went from a 2% wind hail, which we had last year, to a 3%, which increased if we'd want to do a buy-down policy like we did last year. So, last year, the deductible was, for the wind hail, was about 1.2 million. We bought that down to 600,000 with the wind hail buy-down policy, which cost 57,000 last year, okay? So, by going from 2% to 3%, that new wind hail moves from 1.2 to...
Tanner, where exactly are you looking at?
It is right at the bottom of the first page.
Okay.
This is the biggest impact, and we can run through each line, but this is the biggest change in price.
Okay, so when we look at the wind hail buy-down?
Yep.
And we're looking at a reduced deductible by, or to... And we're looking at a reduced deductible by, or to 1%?
Yes, to 1%, which is what we did last year. So last year, we reduced the deductible to 638,000. And to do that this year, it would go to 677 because our property value, because of inflation and just building costs, the total property value went from 63 million to 67 million this year for the total insured up there.
I thought these old properties would be devaluing by now. This old courthouse, when was it built, Jerry?
About 100 years ago.
Yeah, it'd be nice if building values would go down, right? Not just for taxes.
Yes, insurance also.
Yes, insurance also. So, so, but I mean, the, the travelers did, I mean, if you back out everything with travelers renewal, they're at under 10% renewal overall. Even though the property line itself went up over 30%, they kept everything else as flat as possible on the work comp, everything else to offset the increase on the property because they understand that the property increase is very painful. I mean, honestly, we're getting to a stage where even on home and auto, I mean, your personal home, we're getting to affordability stages. I mean, and it's just, it's unfortunate. I mean, but, I mean, the county obviously needs to have property coverage because we don't have the reserves to replace a courthouse for 30 million or 25 million. I mean, the, the biggest exposure, like we talked about last year, of the 67 million, three quarters of it sits right here on this block. I mean, between the two blocks. I mean, everything else is very small structures except for the road shop. I mean, so it is, it's one of those that we have very hail impact resistant buildings. I mean, we did toy around last year. Did we want to do the buy down or not do the buy down? So, I mean, hindsight's 2020. We could have saved 57,000 last year, but it, it is. What do we do to take on more risk but be fiscally responsible with our taxpayers' money? So.
We didn't take the buy down on wind and hail last year?
No, we did the buy down. Yeah, we paid the, it was 57,000 for last year for the buy down. And with rate changes and then, I mean, essentially doubling because we went from 2% to 3%, the wind hail buy down is 123,000 this year, is the quote I have, to go down to 1%. We can quote different levels, so if we wanted to do, I mean, instead of 1%, we could just say, hey, we could quote it down to 750, down to a million. We have the ability with the wind hail buy down.
So at the 1%, we'd be 67.7, is that what you're saying?
67.7 would be our wind hail deductible this year if, if we went to the 1%. We could look at lowering cost if, I mean, if we want to take on possibly more risk, we could say, hey, we want to do 750 or a million. You don't have to do a percentage. You can just do it to a number if, if that makes sense. So you can pick what you want your wind hail exposure to be.
But the same buy down that we did last year is going to cost us almost double this year?
Yeah, because we're, we're going from 2% to 3%. So if you look at that page, that's where I put it is, like on the back of the bottom, like the total payout on the policy was, could have been 638 last year if we would have had a claim. Now it's going to be 1.4 million is the potential payout if we had a claim because of the increase in the wind hail percentage. So if we don't take wind hail coverage, the deductible for the county for wind and hail is basically right around 2.1 million to be, if we wanted to save 120,000 and just kind of roll the dice, that, I mean, if one of the small roads buildings was destroyed, we're already self insuring that anyway at 100,000 or below. Because what did we pay for the emergency management building? I can't remember off the top of my head. So essentially for wind and hail, we're basically self insuring those smaller buildings already. I mean, and the, the main deductible for fire, lightning, I mean, water, all that did not change. That's a $10,000. So we're only talking, I mean, potentially a huge tornado like Elkhorn had, I mean, would be the exposure. I mean, we made it through the 100 mile an hour, multiple 100 mile an hour gustados or whatever they're calling them, so. So that was, be the biggest change. Otherwise, everything else, I mean, we, we increased, I mean, property values, we have increased equipment, we have, I mean, the equipment values increased, which we, and then the vehicle count, the equipment values. We'll run through one more time before the renewal gets done, just make sure we're right where we need to be. Work comp, the mod did go up a little. We were at 1.17 last year. It went to 123 this year. Originally, when the mod was issued, it was a 127. So we have a partner we work with on work comp that verifies all work comp rates. So they went in, looked at the claim reserves, the rating, NCCI, found corrections and was able to get NCCI to reduce the mod from 127 to 123. We also did a forecast for next year because we have the ability to do that because we've had pretty good luck on claims and we're forecasting the mod to go from a 123 to about a 105 next year. So we're going to see, we're, we're starting to go down the downhill slope.
Which, which is good because we were on the wrong slope for four or five years. That's not a good sign.
Nope, and we, I mean, safety committee getting really active, I think, made a big difference. I mean, there's always, in my opinion, a little luck that comes with that because, I mean, we have a lot of employees. Sometimes things happen we can't control. So, but otherwise, beyond that, the, all the other coverages are the same as last year. I mean, the, the work comp, we adjusted the payroll based on the audit, so that's all caught up there. Obviously, will be an audit done this year. I'm assuming payroll will be up a little, but it won't be anything like the comp, the payroll audit we had last year. That was the $100,000. So. Questions you guys have? Did the, the wind hail was the biggest change, obviously, on the, on the pricing. I mean, it just, and you guys don't have to make a decision about that today. We can, we can make a decision however we want to. The other thing I found out with wind hail too is we can actually do short term policies so we don't have to do a full year. We can say, hey, we only want from 8.1 to 10.1, and then next year, we could do one from 4.1 to 10.1. So they'll now let us do three month, six month policies, and then they just prorate it. Because you think about it, the odds of us having a tornado in November, yes, it could happen, but they're pretty low. So if we wanted to look at saving cost, we could potentially structure it that way if we wanted to versus the whole year.
Which would make sense. Make a lot of sense.
So instead of doing 120 at that point, if we did six months, you're looking at 60. I mean, yes, it is a higher rate than last year, but it's still, we're not paying for, I mean.
We're not paying for coverage. We don't.
We're not getting a tornado in January or December.
You could look up historically and see how many tornadoes actually.
I mean, we could. I guarantee there's been some, but the.
Not very many.
Not very many. So, because I do have clients in the same boat that are doing the short term ones because they just don't see the potential, the high potential during the, that season. Even if you want to do a nine month policy and just not do December, January, February, I mean, because March does have some weather.
I like the idea of evaluating it. I mean, if it saves $60,000.
Yeah, because we could.
I feel like it's very worth the effort.
Because if we did one, so this policy renew is 8.1. So if we did 8.1 to 10.1, or if we even wanted to go to 11.1, I mean, that's a three month policy. So that'd be around 25% of that 120. And then we could look at starting another one in the spring.
Like in March or something.
March or so. And we just, we just calendar it to have the discussion. Rates obviously will continue to change. Buy down rates keep going up because that market is getting used. I mean, but it is a tool to offset your exposure. So, and then the other thing, our fee is staying the same per agreement. We're not changing anything that we're billing for you guys.
So the bottom line is the very, the very bottom page?
Yes.
Page number two?
That would be if we took the, did the full.
The full.
The full year, which, I mean. Yeah, a 17% increase overall is, I mean, pretty average per se when we're, when we're have so much, when you have 70 million in property to insure, that takes up the lion's share of, of the increase. I mean, your biggest expense is obviously work comp, which we're working on. We're trying to control that, so.
Hopefully, you're not saying that, or you're saying that for this year in the market it might be, but overall, you're not saying 17% is normal because we've not seen that over the past. You're saying it because the market right now is such a tight market.
Yeah, in the current market, 17% is, I mean, ideally, in a, in a realistic market for a municipality and a large property risk, we should be in the 5% to 10% range. I mean, that's where we should be. But with market conditions, catastrophic claims, I mean, and there's claims that started shifting now. For five years ago, you saw the billion dollar claims were on the coast from fires, floods, hurricanes. Now, if you look at the billion dollar claims in the last couple of years, it's all Midwest tornadoes. I mean, those are.
Because they're not writing those anywhere. It's a part of it.
Part of it. Well, I mean, they're talking that the Cozad hailstorm could be $500 million. So, I mean, between crop and everything included.
35,000 acres of just crops lost, not to mention building damage.
Vehicles and vehicles and, yeah, so it's just, it's, it's a struggle. We also just don't have as much premium as other states because we don't have a lot of people. So, I mean, Iowa hails, but they have four or five times as many people as Nebraska, so their rates are a little more stable, lower.
So when do we need to make this decision by?
Just by the end of the month. I mean, and really, the, I mean, the, the real decision, I guess, is up to you guys on, do we want to do a short term wind hail buy down to save cost?
Absolutely.
I, I.
And what I can do is I can get a quote for that. So do you, do we want to do like 8.1 to 11.1 to just cover October? Or do you want to just do a two month from an 8.1 to 10.1? I mean, it does hail in October. But I, I, I mean, the odds of tornadoes kind of dwindle at that time of year. That doesn't mean it can't happen, but.
I'd say a couple of months would be adequate, wouldn't it?
I would think so too.
So I'll, I'll, I'll get these revised with the two month wind hail buy down.
I didn't mean to interrupt, but maybe in the interim, we can pull up the National Weather Service.
Yeah, I can get the history.
We can find out how many those kind of events for the month of October, for example.
Yeah, we can all, all reach out to the weather service and see if they can give us, even October, like the winter months, just so we have an idea and then we can make a plan.
Please do.
And then we'll have to come back and revisit that when that expires?
Yes, so we can just do, well, whatever we decide to do on the two month or three month now, then we'll just set a plan that, hey, we're going to revisit this in January. Like, hey, when do we want to start the wind hail? Get updated quotes because rates will fluctuate between then, so.
So should we wait up till next week, Tanner?
Yeah, let me get the, let me give me the revised version.
We'll have you in for next week and when that, maybe take some action. Thank you, sir.
Tanner, I would like to add, thank you for being such an active part of our safety committee.
Oh, you're welcome. I enjoy it.
And attending those meetings, you and Tammy and the team that you guys have assembled. I think having a very active safety committee will help us with that work comp picture.
Oh, and I guess the one thing, I guess there was one win on the insurance. The cyber policy stayed about the same price, but we reduced the deductible from 25,000 to 10,000 this year with a new vendor that we're going to go with. Evolve is another vendor we do a lot of cyber with, but their pricing and coverages, I mean, from a cost wise, were the same, but the deductible going from 25,000 to 10,000 is a great, I mean.
A real cost savings.
A real cost savings if, knock on wood, we don't have anything happen, so.
Thank you.
All right, I will be in touch. We'll see you next week.
Thank you, Tanner.
Good luck with your wife.
Yeah.
And the cop.
Yeah.
Okay, next agenda item. Discuss, consider, pick up, purchased for pest and predator control department. Good morning, sir. Would you just identify yourself, Barry, and sign in? By the way, Jerry, before we start, I want to next roll up number nine wire. If you want to try to keep that thing running.
Okay, we'll try. We'll, we'll consider.
You're saying tapes on your own, but I brought the wire.
Does a guy really need a transmission?
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Somebody can lead us off here.
I would probably start that and turn it over to Barry. Barry has been utilizing a, an older used vehicle and been having some difficulties with that. And our discussions have centered around Kent and I and Barry's discussions have centered around it probably be a good idea to make sure that Barry was still able to get into the country and do the work that he's been doing. So Barry had looked at some vehicles and he's got three quotes for us.
Right. Did everybody get a sheet on that?
Yeah, and as you have mentioned to me, good used pickups are difficult to find.
Well, what I looked for, I went out looking for a local truck that people around here had used and traded in. And so I knew the background of it. These pickups that they're buying out of the auctions and stuff, they're at the auctions for a reason. And you don't know what those reasons are until they go bad on you. So not saying that a local one's any worse, but I looked into the background on them, pickups that had a trail behind them. Every one of these were taken care of by a local dealer here, and they have the track records on them and oil changes and this kind of stuff. So it was kind of a, my decision on that deal rather than try to go bite into a truck that maybe was going to just give you nothing but fits. So, you know, I'm not interested in really a new truck, but I've got a slip of matic in my truck that I'm using right now, and it's, I don't know how long it's going to last, but it's not looking good on it, so.
Did you get an estimate on repairing the pickup that you currently have?
Well, I, yeah, I did. It was going to cost 5,500 to fix it. The problem of it is the pickup's only valued at probably $4,000. I don't know what it's valued at. We fixed it on a, another issue on the front end and stuff and put $3,500 in it. And we still got a pickup with a bad transmission in it, so.
What year is the pickup you currently have?
07. It's quite old. It's got, it's going on 300,000 miles.
300,000?
Going on 300,000.
It's a gas engine?
Yep. About seven, eight miles.
That's pretty good for, that's.
It's, it's, you know, it's a good truck. Should be, it's been a good truck, you know, but it's, it was taken care of, I think, really. That's the whole thing is just maintenance on the truck. You know, they'll last you a long time if you'll change oil on them every 3,000, 4,000 miles.
So.
Is there any trade in value on that or do we turn it back to its previous?
I don't, you know, I never, I never talked to them about a trade in value because I didn't know how you guys worked this with the county trucks, whether it was, you know, when you got rid of the sheriff's trucks and the older county trucks and stuff, you know, that was all put up for bid, you know, and stuff. And so I didn't know how they wanted to perform this one, so.
Correct me if I'm wrong, this is a vehicle that was donated from the road department, correct?
Right, right.
Road department want it back? You want it back?
Yes.
Really?
For parts?
Possibly, but that plow goes through, that truck has a plow attached to it.
No, not anymore.
Well, it's in our inventory.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We have a plow. So there might be some other possibilities there for that truck, so.
So the road department would probably have it fixed then? Transmission work or?
I guess I don't know. We'd have to look at it and see what other uses we'd have for it, but we would definitely accept the transfer back to us in a while.
In the three vehicles that you looked at, can you give us a summation of what would be most suitable for your type of work?
Well, the best bid I got was a Dodge truck, the sheriff's vehicle. And the problem with the truck is going to be it's a short bed. And I've got a toolbox in the back of my truck right now, plus I've got the backend. I carry poison back there. I carry buckets. I carry traps. I carry pretty much a full bit of merchandise everywhere I go. And a short bed's not going to give me that kind of an advantage. I pull a trailer with me quite a bit when I'm poisoning, but when I'm doing other work and stuff, I don't pull a trailer. I can put a four ritter in the back of it because it's got a longer bed, but if I got a short bed, I can't haul one. So that's my only problem with the sheriff's vehicle. The pickup that Rema Chevrolet has was owned by a guy in Paxton, Nebraska. They've got the full deal on it. They put some money in it. They put a new electrical system in it. They put a new battery in it, new alternator on it. It's pretty well went, gone through. Ford was the same thing. That belonged to a doctor here in town, and I think it's got 100,000 miles on it, but it's, I don't think it's probably ever seen a faster in its life, but.
Makes a lot of difference.
Huh? Huh?
Makes a lot of difference.
Yes, it does. Yeah, it does. And so, you know, there's, there's an example of what I've been able to find, and it's not very easy to find a pickup around here that have been traded off. It's worth, you know, putting the money into again.
All of these pickups are the full four-doors?
Yes. Except for Remus', that's an extended cab. It's a four-door, but it's an extended cab, which is fine. It's got enough backseat. I can put stuff in the back. I don't like a single cab because I've got too much stuff to put away, and I just, I've got no place to put it. But that, that one at Remus Chevrolet does have an extended cab to it, and it's, it's called a double cab. I think that's what they call them now, so.
Like a crew cab, or...
It's like a crew cab. It's a double cab. It's about half the size of a regular cab.
Crew cab's a full door, and a double cab's a short door. And the 2017 Silverado, what kind of box does it have on it?
It's got a long box.
Long box.
Six foot, six foot two inch. It's what I call a long box. A true long box is an eight-foot box, but that's, that's a lot of truck, you know, which we don't need, so.
So, it looks to me like maybe the Remus vehicle might be the best one?
Well, you know, price-wise, vehicle-wise, I can tell you now, the guy from Paxton, I talked to him on the phone, he did use it for pasture driving and stuff, so it's, it's been used, you know, but it's, he's kept it in good shape, you know, the body's in good shape, you know, it's got one dent and a bumper, it's all, and everything, and it seems to be, he changed oil in it pretty regularly, every 4,000. He tried to change it every 4,000 miles, he said. The one that the doctor had, it was changed every 3,000 miles, and it's showroom quality. I mean, what can you say? You know, it's, it's, I don't think it's ever seen a proper grab with a road. I don't know.
How many miles on, I see there's 86 on the Ford. How many on those other two?
On the Remus one?
106. 136?
Yeah, miles, yeah.
So, we're 20,000 less miles on the Ford.
Did you say 136?
20,000. It's 106 versus 86.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Jerry.
The deal of it is that you're going to pay for the mileage, miles, that's, that's what you're buying basically, because they're this close to the same year and stuff, and they're, you're basically paying for the miles that you're getting out of one.
And what was the pri, I don't, what was the price on the Ford?
On the Ford?
29.6.
29.6, yeah.
Versus 26.10.
Yeah, and that was no negotiation. That was just, I tried to get him to negotiate, and he said if, he said if you're going to be really serious about buying, he said, well, we can do you better, but that's the price he quoted me. So, take it for what it's worth.
I'm not, I'm not going to speak too much on this. All I know is that if I were buying a vehicle, whatever it's worth, you know, if you take, it's like the little old lady who only drove it to church on Sundays and kept it in a garage. Well, maybe the doctor did do that, but maybe on the other hand, that, you know, a pasture won't know what it's like, but I would hope that maybe we could do better than that price, but, you know, the, the miles are sure good. Can't, what would be your thoughts?
Well, I'm asking myself why we don't fix the transmission if the county one, the road department would take it back. That's my only thing, is if this pickup is roached and not worth putting any more money in, I, I get it, and it's an old pickup, and it's got a lot of miles. But if Jason's going to turn around, put a plow rig back on it, he's going to have to spend the same amount of money to fix the transmission.
Yeah, Kent, I guess some of our, I guess our options for that truck, too, we have one very similar to it, actually sitting parked right now in our auction line that's good, we're going to get rid of, so I guess just knee-jerk is we'll take it back, and there might be some option between both of them.
And make a whole pickup?
So, yeah, it's just got, fortunately, we have some other repair facilities available for this one right for you right now.
I did ask, Barry, did you get a cost to have it repaired?
Yeah.
$5,500.
$5,100, I'm sorry, thanks.
Does it use oil, Barry?
No, that's one good thing. That motor is probably top-notch in that truck for as old as it is, many miles. I've never put oil in it. I've changed it every time I get 3,000, 3,500 miles on it. I've been changing the oil in it. It does have a lifter sticking, and you can hear it when you start it up, and as it's running, you'll hear the lifter. I talked to the mechanic out there at the shop, and Ken told me, he said, that's just one of them deals. He said they're not really repairable because they're hydraulic lifters, and he says you're into a major deal if you're going to repair one of them, so we've just been driving it like that, so. Other than that, it's a pretty solid motor.
Didn't, didn't the Predator Control Department receive two pickups from the county road department?
Yeah, yeah.
Is the other pickup...
The other one's even more shaped than this.
That was going to be my question, is if it, if it was a better vehicle...
I tried driving it, because Jerry had been driving it, so I, I took it out, and I'm telling you, it's almost 911 call when you drive it. It's the noisiest thing I've ever driven in my life, shake and rattle and roll, so.
Well, from the standpoint of being out in the outer parts of the county and being stranded by a vehicle that doesn't, isn't reliable, I think that's something I want to, I will take into consideration.
Yeah. You know, today's, you know, advancement with the cell phones, you know, there's not a lot of places you can't get without a cell phone, you know, or text one, at least somebody to come get you out of a bad situation, but the places I go to, I would say 60 to 70% of the places I'm at don't have cell service at all. And there's some places up here north on the county line, I can't get even a cell, a text to go out.
Not even if you walk to the top of the hill?
I don't even know if you can do it then, you know. I've, I've tested it on a couple of hills, and there is, it says SOS, nothing, you know.
So, the 2020 Dodge has almost half the miles on it. You don't like the short box, but we could put a box extension on it or build one. You can get box extensions for those, or just have, just use your trailer. That's the same amount of money, isn't it, or no?
That, that truck won't be available until the end of the month because the sheriff's department's got to pull their equipment out of it and stuff yet, and they're waiting for the expert to do that.
Just get the keys and just roach it right there in their parking lot.
My, my...
Close your eyes on Saturday night, it'll be done.
They do have cameras over there, I guess.
My thought is, if we're going to, if the county's going to end up investing money in fixing this vehicle anyway, I wonder if it wouldn't be a good idea for us to go ahead and do that, and you continue to use the pickup since it has all of your equipment and everything that you've done with it, until we get through the budget season. Our budget season's coming up in the next couple of months, and I'd kind of like personally to see where we're at before I vote yes for purchasing a pickup for over...
What do you look at for time on that, 30 days, yeah?
On the budget?
We're sexually here.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it's here now, but I mean, you haven't...
Yeah, it's here now. We usually have a good idea on where we're going by September, end of August, first of September.
But if that motor is sound enough to get you through another year, another season, that's a, that's a lot more economical fix, but...
Just, just a question. And I can probably tell by the reaction on your face, Jason, is there any chance that you could work with him, our mechanic out there, when throwing a transmission in it, if we get her out of a different department?
I'd probably have to check and see what we...
Where are you at?
...have in the queue right now.
Okay.
We've been pretty busy back at the shop, but I'm sure looking...
Okay, appreciate it, because that's, it seems like that's usually about half the pricing on this kind of stuff.
Most of the time the transmission work, though, a lot of times we don't do that stuff in-house.
Oh, okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
That's the problem with them transmissions, it's unless you're a mechanic that's dealt with automatic transmissions, they're pretty much an expert fix, you know?
If you don't put them back together right, you're going to burn it up...
Yeah.
...in the next first 10 miles.
My, my, my thought on this, everybody was that the money that you're going to put in to that pickup, and I'm just making this as a business standpoint, but the money you're going to put into that, the money we've already put into it, you're dang sure not going to recoup it. You know that. But if it doesn't fix the problem and it does break down, and the motor goes or whatever happens, you're still in the same box. But, you know, for $5,000, and you add it to one of these trucks that you're looking at, you know, what's your best investment?
That's where, that's where I'm at. That's where I'm at. I, I'd like, it'd be nice, Ken, I'd, I'd like to know more about the 2020 Ram. The money's nice on it and low miles, and we know a history on it, too. If there's some way we could make that work.
Well, I think that would be the one that I would lean towards, but I get the short box not being practical, but it's a lot better value as far as miles a year.
Yeah.
So, how short is a short, that short box? Aren't, isn't a short box, aren't they all six foot?
They're five-four. A short box is five-four. Well, what I'm talking about, a long box is six-two, almost, they're supposed, almost six and a half.
Oh, you're talking medium box is...
We have medium box, yeah. A long box is an eight foot.
Eight foot, yeah, because I have a long box.
You can't already find an eight-foot box anymore, you know?
I would still like to see where we're at with our budget, for me personally.
Is it drivable right now?
Yeah, it's drivable. I just, when I stop somewhere, like a stop sign or anything like that, you punch on it, it's got a, it'll jump and go.
Yeah.
You know, it's slip-o-matic, and like I say, it's got a, you know, once you're out driving it on the flats, you're fine, but it's when you stop, try to climb hills. I tried to climb a hill the other day with it and wouldn't go up it. Tried it in four-wheel drive, still couldn't go. Had to roll back down the hill once I got on the flats and sit there a little bit, and I was fine.
So, we got to traverse our hills and always park on the top so you can get started then, for you.
Yeah.
So, you know, I, I wouldn't mind seeing where we're at budget-wise before we put even the 5,000 in it, you know what I mean?
Can we flush, can we go over to the transmissions shop and have them flush it?
Okay.
Flush that transmission, see if they can clean it up, and then give us a little time to rehash the stuff in the next month as we...
Because I, I think when we got the truck, Ken told me they had just changed the filter in the transmission about, you know, 2,000 miles before we got the truck, you know, when the county was still driving it and road department.
Jason, do you have shop records on that pickup? Did you have trouble with that?
Yeah, I don't know if there's any trouble. I might have to pull...
Have you ever flushed those automatic transmissions? I've done it on a couple of vehicles.
I know a lot of those newer ones are pretty much just not touching wood.
Nothing, doesn't do any good.
You can't, yeah, once you open them up, you pretty much have to rebuild them.
But this is an old setup.
You're kidding, really? That's like a throwaway.
Welcome to our world. No, I appreciate you guys' time on this. This is something that, you know, that it's not a do-or-die deal right now. I mean, I can get by with what I'm doing, and hopefully we can last until...
And I just went against my rule because I said we weren't going to discuss until the item was on the table, and I'm the one that started it, so that's on me, guys. But Jerry, is that okay if we try to buy a little bit of time?
Yep.
Okay. Thanks, Mary. Okay, it's 10 o'clock plus 18 minutes. Next item is discuss, consider audit engagement letter with Regir Carr and Monroe LLP. Anybody in the audience want to address that?
No, but I will. As the board's well aware, this is the accounting firm that has, we're trying to retain to do our audits in the future. They had sent an initial engagement letter some time ago. The clerk's office, the treasurer, and myself all took a look at that. We all noted some concerns that we had with it. We reached back out to the accounting firm with our concerns. They responded with some updated information, let us know most everything we had concerns about would be taken care of in the more formal agreement that we signed with them beyond the engagement letter. They addressed the concerns that I had. I suspect they addressed the concerns Alex had, and Becky had not expressed any additional concerns either, so I believe the engagement letter is such that you can sign it so we can get these people on the hook.
Thank you, Councilor. Entertain a motion to engage Regir Carr and Monroe LLP.
I would make a motion to approve the audit, audit engagement letter as it's written with Regir Carr Monroe LLP for accounting services.
Second. Motion to second discussion.
Audit motion to clarify audit.
And do we have a, is that for all of our signatures? Do we have it down there? I assume it is, but I don't know.
I don't see a signature.
I don't see a signature, Angie, there.
I don't see one.
Do you have anything, Tyler, that came with that?
I have the document that comes next.
I don't remember seeing the signature.
Yeah. They did, they sent it with the original one.
I guess if they need one, they'll request it, but...
So, we have a motion in a second to engage with them for their services if, in fact, we find that there is a letter of the original one at a later time. We still have that motion so that we can sign that, and so any other discussion or questions? Roll call vote, please.
Aye.
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 Aye. I can tell you, it'll be very few, or five minutes or less, probably less, okay? Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, the county board members will be the ones staying in the room. And, and, no, no. Okay, our next item is closed session, discuss strategy with respect to pending rent litigation, real estate purchase or lease options, deployment of security personnel and devices, or evaluation of job performance to prevent needless injury and reputation. I've talked with Tyler. We had a matter on last week with regards to lease regarding the county and I would entertain a motion to go into closed session for that reason.
To discuss potential lease tenants?
Yes, to discuss potential lease tenants.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we go into closed session to discuss potential lease tenants.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Werler.
Aye.
Me.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye. I can tell you'll be very few, or five minutes or less, probably less, okay? Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, the county board members will be the ones staying in the room. And, and, no, no. Deputy County Attorney Tyler Volker.
You like that way too much.
Next item is to hear concerns from elected officials, department heads, and/or their representatives. Is there anyone wishing to address that part of the meeting? Is there anybody that has a commissioner's report that they feel compelled to give this time? If there is, please do.
Don't you have something, Booker?
No.
Okay. If there's no one wants to give a commissioner's report, we will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners at 10:38 and -- oh, wait. Yes. And convene as the Lincoln County Board of Evilization, again, following the Open Meetings Act. A copy of -- has amended, a copy of which is supposed to be in through the room. Next item is discuss, consider reports of destroyed real estate property, Form 425, once we're online and everybody is set up here.
Six? You have six of them? No, 425.
There's different people. I don't know, but there are lots of them. I'm not sure if we'll get a rule on them yet today. I'm going to go ahead and give you guys some information, a little bit. What I wanted at least to get in front of you today, you know, we discussed.
Oh, I see.
Kent, you went out with us and we did some photos.
Yep, right.
That some of the places were back in where we did not have access to. So Todd and -- her name from the weeds.
Right.
And Booker, I think, was with him. Booker's here today. But they did get some drone footage, and I do have that on the thumb drive, if you would like to see some of that. This is just some of the information that the Department of Revenue has put out. Some of it are questions and answers. There's a suggested practice information by the county board. The other's an information guide.
So you have one, two, three, four that actually lost buildings, improvements?
Um.
Do you have it clipped together?
I think so, yeah. One of them was from the Winnato thing, but the others were, I think, from the fire.
So you want to start with those?
What old thing?
Gus Nato.
Wet Nato.
That's what she put on there, was Winnato.
Win Nato.
Gus Nato.
Oh.
This happened not too long ago, nor for the.
So how do you want to start? You want to start with these four parcels? That have buildings lost?
That's fine. I guess if you know what you're going to be doing with the land, too.
I think we're just looking for direction.
Yeah, we're looking for direction.
We can't, I know I am.
Let me get the ones that are -- okay, so we have Suprow, Montgomery, Fletcher. What other fourth one do you have?
Joe's got his hand.
I have a Morgan Fletcher and Jen, and I have a Perry Lustrum.
I don't think of that one. They lost buildings on the Lustrums.
No.
Oh, is that what that was?
Oh, I'm sorry. Your note says these three apps lost buildings, but it had a fourth one, it had the.
That one was kind of by itself. That Lustrum one, I mean, it's the only app that individual filed. Some of the others are multiple apps.
Oh.
That might be how it actually looks.
So that's not part of what we're doing, I guess, right now, Sheriff?
Oh, yeah, I think that Perry Lustrum. Perry Lustrum is not one of the ones that lost any of the buildings.
So do you want to start with Laura Suprow, Prickle?
I guess my question to you guys, do you want to see the land first? Because not only did these people lose their outbuildings, they lost the trees and, you know, the pasture ground and stuff with them. So if you're going to make.
And so, let me ask it this way. Are they all filed on one thing, or are we hearing them separately? If they're filed together, I would think it would be appropriate to look at them together, if that's how they're filed.
Each individual filed on their own parcel. But what I'm saying is on this parcel, they're saying we lost our buildings and our ground.
But I mean. That's my point. So on this filing, it says I lost ground and a building, because it's hard to get it. Lost barn, lost trees, okay, so.
Now, the Montgomery one is only going to be the sheds, because that was the one that was the Gus Nato.
That's the one I have.
So she only -- that's the one that had a few little small sheds that we were able to adjust. There was no incident on any land on the Montgomery one.
So let's take, let's take the Gus Nato first, if that's okay.
Yep, that one we could.
Let's just take that at this time.
Okay. I have Form 425 filed by Scott Montgomery, located at 5573 South Old Highway 83, North Platte, Nebraska. Parcel number 0053669.45. Legal description is part of the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 241330, 4.5 acres. The reason for reassessment is damage to two buildings done by a Gus Nato. There was an eight-by-12 metal shed and an eight-by-eight shed destroyed by the wind. The current year assessed value, land is $47,250, buildings $260,130, for a total of $307,380.
Okay, so, except these are new to us as well as they are you. I didn't know if we'd rule on them today, so you probably do not even have the cost sheets with the new adjustments made. But Ashley did look at it and removed the two small sheds that were talked about or mentioned on her. Application. So I don't know, do you want me to give you the new sheet so you can read it and review value, if that's what you want to do?
Yes, I think that'd be good.
Because these do not have any place on there for an assessor to put a recommendation.
Okay.
So those are, these will be the new. These are the new. Should be added together, those two figures.
Okay. Should I add those together?
When you made the improvement values.
Okay. 259, should I write that on here?
You want to write it on your destroyed building here for buildings.
You want to give me the same thing for this?
Yeah.
Because I'm going to need to read it in, too.
Yeah.
Maybe also on Kent's.
Okay. Those also had land. Those also had land that they lost.
I understand, so does Kent's, but I'd like to have that, just what you.
So this was reviewed by Ashley.
I've got the Perry.
Okay, that one I don't.
This property was reviewed by Ashley. She reviewed the report of destroyed real property, removed the eight-by-eight flat value wood shed, shed number one, and a flat value eight-by-12 metal shed, shed number three. They were damaged by a Gus Nato that came through the property. That leaves the land value at $47,250 and lowers the building value to $259,630 for a total of $306,880.
I'll second that motion. I. All right. Aye.
Aye.
Kent, you want me to try to chew off the next one, or you want to?
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm going to need some help from the assessor's office, so here's, here's what I have. It's a Form 425, and it's a report of destroyed real property by Morgan Fletcher and Jen, 10573 North Maxwell Road, Maxwell, Nebraska. The date of damage, 2/26/24. Property identification number 71450.0. It's the northwest quarter and the west half of the southwest quarter, 341528. Their comment was due to fire, lost barn and all outbuildings, lost trees and all ground burned up in fire. So if it's possible, I think this is something that we could get that up under. We have it up?
It is.
Okay. And the photo that I am looking at here definitely shows some damage due to fire. I don't know if you can see that, Kent, but really pretty much just took it down.
Yeah.
See the chart areas on the building? There's also another one that shows a number of trees that have been burned up in the background, pretty much just as they said. Burned up the trees, the land, and some outbuildings. Now, what I'm trying to determine here is, I'm confused, because it had the 24 value on of land at 197, 197, buildings at 93, 798, for a total of 299, 95. And it looks like on the, the remark here from the assessor's office, current year assessment value is all it has, so this is totally up to the board as to how we determine a loss, looking at the information you just gave us from the state?
We calculated the improvements. You know, so we took the improvement values and deducted the buildings that were missing. So we made changes to the improvement values, but as to the land value, that's where the struggle's going to be. You know, if you read the information provided by the state, it is, destroyed property on the land cannot include crops, damage to the crops. It would include damage to the ground itself in excess of 20 percent. So that's where, I guess, we got the aerial footage to see. You know, some of them are saying that it's going to take years to recover. You know, I think these photos were all handed out to you earlier at an earlier date that we went out with, with Kent, and you could see, I mean, there's a lot of green grass in most places.
Let's, let me, let me, let me back up here a little bit. I'm going to, I'm going to start with the building, because I'm confused with what your recommendations were. It looks to me like the buildings were 93, 798, and it looks like you are recommending that that dropped down to 89,000?
There was a couple small outbuildings that didn't have, that had minimum, minimal value on them. There was damage to the north side of the house and smoke damage to the inside, but since, I mean, they're back in living, the insurance has come in and, you know, so I don't know how we, I don't know how you do that. They were misplaced for six, three months out of the house, but insurance paid for everything to be cleaned and put back. They bought all new furniture, they bought new siding.
I mean, I appreciate that, but I'm just trying to look at, so you had the.
You can see the old cost sheets in there, so if you want to know what the, the values were on some of those older buildings, we can, they're in there.
I would welcome you to look here, too.
So Julie, did you, you said that insurance has already been there and settled, and everything has been replaced?
Yep, and they're back living there.
Just the house part is replaced, not the outbuildings.
No, not outbuildings.
No.
So it's not settled, no.
So we don't have any value on the outbuildings.
You mean you didn't have before?
We did have before, but we took it off, so right.
So the outbuilding, you must only have like 4,000.
Yeah, they were very minimal, yeah.
Keep him in line over there.
So we have one, the garage. And then, barn with a loft was 1,040. And then there might have been.
That explains why you didn't take off any more than you had, because, but let's, let's talk about that. That's what we had assessed at, but that doesn't mean that's what it would be to replace it. So how do we look at this thing? I'm asking, I'm, I'm looking for direction. I mean, if, if I had a loss.
We're removing the value that was on the property on our property record card. To me, I don't feel we can remove more value than what was there.
That makes sense.
That makes sense, yes.
If they put anything new, we'll get it for next year.
Sure.
Yeah, they won't pay taxes on anything new this year, no. It would be picked up for next year.
Okay.
I, I see where Joe's coming from.
Yeah, I do get that, too.
Because based on the pictures, that looks devastating. I would be.
Yeah.
But I, thanks for the explanation.
If we had no value on it, then.
Because that, yeah, that.
Okay, now, the next question is, so, so that sort of answers my mind where I'm going with building improvements, okay? And I guess if, regardless of what the insurance does, if we go in and we have a house that's being renovated and it's only half renovated, we only charge them half value, remember? Or whatever, wherever it's being built, you know, it's partially complete, or if they had a fire or something, we take some value off until we get it back on. So if we had things like smoke damage, how does that get affected, other than by insurance, on our things? How do we, for example, if it were more than smoke, let's say they had some scarring to the inside of the wall, how, what would you do on your assessment? How would you address that to a house?
How do you use functional appreciation?
Anyway, it depends on when it occurred and how it occurred. You know, this is a fairly new, this 425. Previously, if it happened after January 1st, there was just nothing that could be done until, you know, the following year. And then if, if it was still there the following year, we would do something, you know, and adjust.
Okay, got you.
But now where they have.
This way, all the damage.
And, and this is due to a calamity. Now, if, if this individual would have set fire to his own house on their own stupidity, you know, left a cigarette burn or something, then this 425 is Nolan Boyd, and it happened after the first of the year, so we would be unable to make any adjustment to that.
Okay.
But since this is a natural disaster and it occurred after, then there, there can be some adjustments made. And that's, like I said, this is new to us, too, so we're not sure, so that's kind of, I mean, we, there's no place on this for us to make any decision. I think we're here to help.
Sure.
Explain and let you guys make the decisions.
Basically, you're looking at it as they set the clock back to January 1. Basically.
No, I'm, I'm looking at, because this is a different form than.
Right.
Than January 1, I'm looking at, how do I address this destroyed real property?
Right, you're looking at it as of July 1st, it'd be as January 1.
Yeah.
Is whether you're just setting the date back to January 1, if it's a natural disaster.
So you're thinking functional needs to be applied to that, even though they are back living there and it's been, you know, done, whatever.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to get this, because this is new to me.
I wonder if it would help us if we had current pictures of what it looks like.
And I, and to be honest with you, we haven't had a chance to review what the state said.
They've got all new flooring, new carpeting, meaning it's going to look totally, you know, immaculate inside.
And new siding on the outside has been replaced, okay.
But they were, like I said, displaced for three months while that did all occur.
So in your, on your reduction, all you took off is the destroyed buildings?
That's the only thing that we did right now for you guys.
Okay.
We knew that was, that's a given, those are gone, so those are.
So that's where the reduction came?
That's where the reduction came from, is those few little outbuildings that had the small value.
But if, but if this were my property, then, for example, if there was no assessed value on these trees, I mean, it took out all the trees due to a fire, that's, that's pretty obvious. And it's, and it's obvious if that were my property, that definitely lowered the value of my homestead, not all having a wet shade. But does that mean, so does this damaged property allow us to look at the trees? Because they're gone.
I don't see anything that allows us to look at the trees.
I, I don't see a separate value on the trees when I'm looking at the property.
You don't value trees, you don't value fences, even though they might have the best fence of all their neighbors.
And those are also items that you can't insure.
You know, if there's a tree grove, it's, it's given a grassland value, you know, as if there was, was grass there. So, I mean, it's not like I, I draw around the trees and there's absolutely no value to those trees. I mean, I'm not saying that, but I don't draw around them and give them a different value from the grass, saying they're worth more than the grass or less than the grass. I don't do that, but any tree belt is going to have a grassland value, like Clorox South and those canyons with all those cedar trees, the whole thing. I mean, they're just given a grassland value.
But what the thing he gave us from the state of Nebraska does allow us to do that. It says significant damage, it says damage to land, damage to land, 20 percent of the parcel's assessed land value for the current tax year is determined by the county assessor. So if these people only had an acre or two of ground, for God's sakes, I guarantee you that's over 20 percent of that land. So we do have that capability.
It's damage to the land, not to, not to any growing crops on the land.
All I'm, all I'm reading, it says significant damage means damage to land exceeding 20 percent of the parcel's assessed land value in the current tax year, as determined by the county assessor. Damage exceeding 20 percent of the assessed value in the current tax year is determined by the county assessor.
But that's a crop.
The loss of crop and/or livestock as a result is not considered destroyed real property. That's on the second page.
Oh, second, okay.
Of your damaged property examples and considerations.
I'll call you back, anybody.
And it talks about, you know, water, too. And I get it, I, I am very sympathetic. I know trees are very important, too, to ag people in the sand hills for shelter belts from storms and stuff, and it is devastating to them, but, you know, people that lose cornfields to hail, you feel sympathetic to them, too, but we're unable to do anything there.
I.
Or hailed grassland. I've seen hail wipe out grass for the summer because it piled and it froze, or it just beat it to death, and you couldn't put your cows out there.
For me personally, the trees on my place are some of the best features of our place.
Yeah, and I don't argue that.
And I feel like it adds to the value, but that's not allowed, right?
Well, I, I'm just reading, however you guys read this, whatever you consider crop.
Where were you reading that off the second page?
I'm on the information guide. Are you on that page, the information guide?
Yeah. Well, I don't know, I'm on this guy right here, maybe I'm on the wrong one.
Under the damaged property examples.
This, this one right here, Julie, with the blue line.
Nope, I'm on, I'm on the information guide.
Okay, let me get over here, then.
Tyler, have you reviewed this?
Yeah, I've looked through it. I don't know that.
On the second page, Joe.
You know, we had a fire a few years ago, and we lost shelter, part of a shelter belt.
On this one, Julie.
Thank God it didn't burn up all of our shelter belts.
This one, the destroyed real property.
It's still not a shelter belt, and it won't be in my lifetime. So I get this, but I also don't want to have a bunch of stuff go to Turk and get reversed, because.
The fourth line down.
We're not interpreting this right.
Yeah. Like I said, this is fairly new. I don't.
Like, well, Kent and I have talked, what's the difference between a prescribed to burn and this?
I, I.
The trees are gone.
I, I don't, I don't know. One is a prescribed burn, one you ask to have done because it's damaging your property. One is you're not asking to have your house trees up there, or where you put your cattle in for a shelter belt, you're not asking to have that burned. To me, there's a lot of difference.
But now, what's the damage to the land?
Is there a difference under the statute? That's the question.
Yeah.
But of course, nobody wants to lose their shelter belt.
Actually, I haven't had a chance to even read this, I'm sorry.
And, and I know, Terry, we've got it to go on later, so if you guys want to, if you just want us to kind of show you some of the imagery, if you want to take these sheets and look them over and read them, but we can show you some of the flight.
Kent, is that okay? There's only two or three of these, we're going to tie up so much time.
Yeah, but I would like to have Tyler weigh in on the language of these, because if we're going to get out in the weeds on one.
I agree.
I agree.
We're going to open up a can of worms here.
Yes, Tyler, could we get you a copy of this and have you bruise that and?
I think I can.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
Being someone who's lost shelter belts to a wildfire, I'm sympathetic.
And then another thing, you know, you must keep in, in mind, like you said, you can't consider crop as lost, no whether the grass is considered the crop on there. Is, maybe that's totally different than your, your shelter belt and your trees.
Yeah, I wasn't even looking at crop. That wasn't even the.
It has to be 20 percent or greater of the value of the total property, too. So if you're looking at, like Joe said, if you got a one-acre one and this shelter belt of trees, that's one thing, but if you're looking at a 640 whole acre tract as one parcel, and the way I'm reading it, we look at it as a parcel as a whole, because that's what they're applying on. they're applying on each one for every parcel. If they had a shelter belt, is that gonna, you know, be more than 20% of the total value? I mean, those are just things that keep in mind that follow these guidelines.
Okay, if I, if I could interject here, I've, I don't have one with property, with buildings on it. This one right here is just fire to the grass and to the fences. So this one, in my view, is from what you guys have been describing and what I see in this information, if that Lusstrom property, 20% of the grass that had been burned, is that correct? On his section, it'd have to be 20% of it burnt?
Well, I'm have to, what, it has to be, 20% of the valuation has to be affected by what was burned. So now whether the half section burned, whether the entire section burned, 20% of that total value of that parcel has to be...
He's, he's got a section valued at $460,000. I don't, I can't tell from the picture here how much was burnt. Can you say on the Lusstrom? This is property ID 7082000.
What section township range is that?
261427.
I, I don't have that one specific. What is wrong with that up there? Why is that being like that? I'm gonna shut it off and we'll try it again.
But, but from what we're, we're getting, the information we have in front of us, if that section was not damaged by 20% or more, we don't do anything with it, right?
Well, I guess, my deal is, on a controlled burn on, on range, you're, you're actually cleaning that up, you're getting rid of scrub seeders and other things. So a wildfire, while you don't want it, and it's gonna, it's definitely gonna diminish carrying capacity while you get a grass over, grassed over again. To me, you're, you're opening up that you could take any fire event and use the same...
But this isn't, this didn't damage the land. The land isn't damaged.
Did the Lusstrom property have any disced? Did we go in disced?
But aren't we looking at two different things? Aren't we trying to confuse what we do as a board of equalization? Aren't we trying to confuse that with this report of destroyed real property? Because they're two different things. You know, we're not acting as we ordinarily do. This, this is, this report of destroyed real property is not what we're gonna be hearing all the rest of the day. So aren't these two different, totally different things? Because there's not even a place on here for a recommendation from you.
Right.
This is just a new thing that came out that we can consider on destroyed property. Is that separate?
Yes.
Okay.
It has to have at least the 20% damage, but like, I think what Ken is saying, you know, we, do we open that up from somebody did prescribe burns from January 1st to July 15th?
No, because I don't think it prescribed per...
Would be considered a calamity.
Right, right.
That would be, be able to kick that, that was, yeah, my thought too, possibly, yeah.
And next year it can go back on, like you say, on the carrying capacity, but for, if they did lose a year of grazing, I think that's what this separate report is trying to address. We really have two of them.
Do you, do you remember viewing this Lusstrom property?
Yes.
This is gonna be one of the ones that was disced, Booker.
Yeah, and you'll see it, it has its black and white, when you, when it gets up there and it's... Here's my two cents on this, and just for, guys, what a burn, it is coming back better with burn. And if, when it gets high up there, you can see, you look across, it looks real green. You get 400 feet in here...
It's pretty bare, yeah.
Guys, but the main problem is, is everybody deals with fires, ranches and sand hills. They know it's gonna take a year for it to come back on and graze, otherwise it'll destroy it. Everybody kind of...
That's fine, they know that, but that's not what we're addressing.
But the disced property, the disced, is where, it's gonna take five years, it's like, it's like CRP, guys. You know, it's gonna take a while to heal, everyone knows that, that's why they pick a lot of that, and that's where they're gonna be losing out on for years. But burn deal, burn deal, is it, you know...
Yeah, but let's not confuse, Booker, what we're trying to look at right here on this separate report, where we destroyed and real property. I, I get it that it comes back next year, we can put it on its full value next year, but if they lose over 20% of the grazing value of that property for this year...
No, 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 no. We can't, we can't.
You can't include the crop.
We can't consider the crop.
No income produced off of it. It has to be the land, the damage to the land.
Oh, 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 thank you.
See, my, my deal is, is, I'm looking at it, because I'm something, you guys know this, and...
Thank you.
On, on the ranch side of it, it's, what I see that's viable there is the grass. You guys are trying to judge us by acres, while the grass is what puts pounds on cattle, that's how they make their money. It ain't, they don't eat same.
It doesn't make any difference, we can't change the statute.
You can't change the statute, so you're just gonna stop, from what I see.
Well, I think we are stuck, and that's my, why I want Tyler to review this.
But like, there's, right there's a perfect example of disced.
Yeah, you can...
Yeah, there's no doubt, you can definitely tell.
That's damaged property.
That's damaged property.
But is it 20% of the, does it affect 20% of the value?
Of each parcel.
Probably not.
Probably not, it's probably disced the size of a two lane road.
Yeah, there's, I had somebody get on mine and disced it too, and I don't even know who they were.
Yep.
So...
But that's what I know about the guys.
And I had to live with it for 10 years too.
Now, like, when, I know when the flooding happened, you know, back east, and all that three, four foot sand silted in, or, you know, silted, and then some of them had three to five, six foot washes, you know, and then, so they had to do a bunch of dirt work. I think that's kind of why this came about, and I think, you know, that type of damage to the land is definitely obvious.
And that's damage to the land.
This is gonna be one that's more, more tricky. We've been told, and told by the Department of Revenue, you cannot, don't look at the crop, no crop production.
No crop.
Or fences either.
Or fences, it's temporary, it's not part of the land.
It's not part of the, the total value, the fences are not, like Ken said. He can have the worst fences in the world, his section of grass is gonna be exactly like the neighbors that has a beautiful five wire brandy post fence. You know, we, we don't value those four wire fences. Not that it doesn't cost, I think I've seen what it costs for a gentleman to replace four sides of the section, it was unreal.
Tyler, you got a comment?
If I'm not mistaken, this came about as a result of the bomb cyclone several years ago, we got, that resulted in the dam up in the north central part of the state washing out. Julie's right. This piece of law came about because of folks who had ag land, either had 10 foot ravines cut in it, or they had five foot of sand deposited on it.
Right.
It was about literally destroying the property to a more or less no useful state. What this board is gonna have to do in applying some law that was not made for this purpose is, the threshold question's gonna have to be, is grass on range land a crop? That's what this board's gonna have to decide. And there's no law to tell you whether or not that's a crop. After that, you're gonna have to decide whether or not they've lost more than 20% of value, or that burned grass has affected more than 20% of the valuation of that parcel. The bigger the parcel gets, the less likely you're probably gonna get it meets that threshold. Final thing the board's gonna have to probably figure out as a policy, is whether or not you consider trees to be part of the land. Again, this was created because of destroyed farmland, grow crop land on the other end of the state. This end of the state, the shelter belt may very well be as integral to the land as the four or five foot of blackberries on that end of the state. That's for this board to decide. Again, until the law comes out and says something different, you've got a lot of leeway. But those are the kinds of things that, that the group of you collectively are gonna have to come to some kind of an understanding of.
So in my case, in this one right here, since there's no buildings destroyed, and it looks like the land was not damaged to the 20% level, this cannot be readjusted, the way I'm seeing it.
For you guys to decide there. What section township range? Let's bring that up on the GIS.
That's 261427.
Because that one specifically was not listed, oh wait, yep, it is too, nevermind.
So are these parcels of land that the fire went through the entire parcel? Or is, did it just go through...
Some of them, Michaela, it went through the whole thing, and some of them, they went through...
A strap or caught a corner of it?
This looks like it went through one corner of this section.
Yeah, there's some that's a whole section, that's why it got pulled.
And, and there was, some people were very more descriptive as far as it damaged one third or just northwest quarter. Now, I, you get the ones from Haythorns, and all he's got is fire damage in a section, you'd have no idea.
How much?
Part of it, you know, so...
Well, Terry, to your point, on a parcel like that, no improvements, just burning off the crop, I'm gonna say it's a crop.
I'm saying it's a crop.
It is a crop.
And to, to me, we, that, I would vote to deny those and let Turk tell us if it's, they can always reverse us.
Yeah, really.
Yeah, the people do have the ability after the rules on this, they do have that...
And I'm not, I'm not gonna say on a blanket statement for all of these, I'm just saying, in that, I would say it's wiser to deny it and then seek guidance from Turk.
Yeah, because by following all of the things that we've been told and all the information we have, and Tyler's explanation and his guidance, as he interprets it as well, as much as I would, I, I hope for what happened to the property.
Yes.
I don't think we have any, any, any other recourse than say, well, let's deny it and like you say, take it on to the state, let them...
Now, the one I have, does not ask for a reduction, or maybe they, if I didn't, I read their narrative wrong, but essentially what the assessor is saying, that all they're, they've done is take off all the destroyed buildings. And that's all that got removed on this recommendation, and the land stayed the same. So this one, I don't, I think this is a easy one.
It's a pretty easy one, this is a pretty easy one.
Mine was pretty easy.
Mine just became much easier, thank you. So it's, because trees basically are not part of the land.
Yeah, they're not, I mean, you know, everybody, everybody here that's got a parcel, my place is worth more, not because of inflation, but because of the shelter belts I have today that I had 40 years ago, that I didn't have those kind of shelter belts. And if I were to sell that, there's no question, those shelter belts would enhance somebody that had cow calf operation and wanted a couple pivots, there's no doubt. But the statute doesn't say anything about that. And as you say, as far as when we get assessed, when, when you assess my 1,000 acres, doesn't matter if I've got a beautiful shelter belt, still pasture.
That's the way I am doing it right now.
And as long as you don't penalize them by enhancing the value because of the shelter belt, then we're not harming them, so to speak.
Do you, do you take the acres out for a shelter belt?
I don't, Joe, I, I, I know some counties do, they have a lot more shelter belts, or if they do the forestry type and, and, you know, they have the milling places they do.
Show that non-productive area and take it out.
I haven't, I haven't, I guess, noticed that, based on sales, and I guess I'm not seeing that the sales in the sand hills are showing that this section with no trees is selling substantially higher.
Overall, they're not, they're, they're not.
Yeah.
But as long as you're not penalizing me for assessing it higher than the pasture next to it, it serves me better than not having a shelter belt.
Right.
Just having, because, you know, I'm giving up...
Acres.
25 acres of grass.
Right.
But I've got a shelter belt for my cow calf operation.
And I thought, you know, maybe I was gonna have to start doing that in the southeast part with the canyons, because the cedar trees have taken over so much, but it's selling higher than, I don't know, so...
Yeah.
Yeah.
A lot of people like those trees.
They do.
I do have a question.
Yeah, Ken, the, the, the opposite of that would be, say, I bought that 1,000 acres and I don't have any cows, I'm a farmer, I don't wanna tear the trees out.
Yeah, and you're going to, and I've got neighbors that have done that, so, yeah.
The sad thing about the trees is you can replace a building or a fence pretty quick. Trees take, we're 15 years into our tree claim, and it's just now really providing good shelter.
Yeah.
So it's not a quick fix.
This isn't what I wanted to say, but this is, this to me maybe makes more sense. I wanted to give a value to the trees, I think they have value, but we're not assessing the trees.
Correct.
They're not, we're not showing it being worth more value because of the trees, I guess, because when you look at your assessment, we have so many square feet of this and improvements and on and on and on, so I think I'm gonna write wrong or drift, or I'm gonna, we're gonna have to come to a conclusion. I think I know what I'm probably going to do. Do you want me to go first, Ken? You wanna go first?
I'll go.
You wanna go first, because yours is...
No, question is, how many of these do we have?
Quite a few.
Oh my goodness, oh.
We've got...
I got a whole box full there.
Okay.
We've got quite a few right here.
Oh, now that's different.
I mean, though, these are the only three with the buildings that the values will change.
Oh.
If you're going to...
These are all, these are all apparently just...
If you're gonna make the same decision on all the rest of them...
I see, okay.
They might be fairly...
One, two, three, four, there might be a dozen of these.
So this has to do with, I'm gonna, I'm gonna continue with mine, it has to do with the building, and I think I, I don't know where we're at, but I'm gonna just kind of start over and read this in if I have. This is a Morgan Fletcher and Jen, it's parcel number 71450, in Knoxville, Nebraska. This is a Form 425 for a report of destroyed real property. The assessor made the comment that the land remained at $197,197. The buildings are $93,798, because they did already take into account the destroyed buildings, which they had a very minimal...
I think Henry does think maybe that we should give a little bit of functional on that house, because we did not, you had talked about...
I'm gonna have you guys look at this, or else come up and make a recommendation, and I'm gonna have the rest of you go ahead, I'll, I'll hold off on this one right now, please.
Let me go over and...
Julia, I have a quick question before we move on.
Yep, he's got it.
Down here where we fill this part out, do we need to put a number like we do for the other ones?
I don't, like Joe said, these aren't protests.
Just write your explanations, yeah, thank you.
We just sign them, okay.
And then I think you have to fill in the new value.
This was an extra that you guys...
But if it's no change, you'll just be able to write.
The chairman's gotta sign them off.
It says here, the equalization chair person.
Okay.
Has to sign them off.
Yeah. That's fine, that's fine.
You can read them in, but like I said, you don't...
You want me to work with mine, you wanna work your?
Go square.
Okay, let's start, while you're reviewing Joe's, this is Form 425 from Laura Suecroft Frickle. The site of the property, question is, 1003, 103, 12, North Maxwell Road. The property ID number is 0071435.00. Described as all of section 32, township 15, range 28, 640 acres. That's, and denotes fire damage to both land and buildings, house and outbuildings burned to the ground, Bettys Way Fire pasture burned. This was a group effort between Julie and her staff to review this, and I will leave for the record, originally the land was valued at $490,908. The buildings were, of which there were more than one, had a total value of $99,868, so their assessed value prior to this destroying the buildings was $590,776. So the notes of the report, they inspected, and they note that the house and all outbuildings were destroyed by, in the Bettys Way Fire, February 24. Removed the house, number one granary, number three barn, lean to, number four, a shop and garage, number five, a shed, number seven, a tool shed, and number nine, a cattle shed, and 10, an implement shed, is now just land. number seven a tool shed, and number nine a cattle shed, and 10 an implement shed is now just land. So what they've done is removed the recommended, removed the improvements of $99,868 from the assessed value. So the entire assessed value now is $490,908. My motion would be to approve.
Second.
Rule call.
Aye.
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 Aye. So now I pass this over so Joe can sign it?
Yep, I think Joe has to sign all of them by the looks of it. Yeah.
Come here, just go right through. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Fly in it.
Yep, no problem.
Thanks, Booker.
We'll just do the thumb drive back when we're all done.
Michaela, are you ready? You want me to go?
Uh, I already did mine. I did mine first.
Oh, okay.
Oh, do you want me to go? Yep, we voted on it.
Did we?
Yep. You want me to go again?
No, you don't have to.
Okay. Go ahead, Joe.
Um, there's working on Joe's. Please. Okay. I have Form 425, uh, from a Mr. Perry Lustrom, Gothenburg, Nebraska. This is property ID 7082000. Legal description is the section 26 dash 14 dash 27. Significant damage due to fire. Damage occurred to land only, no buildings. Uh, the damage is described as fire and fence damage make this property unusable, unusable due to the Betty's Way fire.
Do you have aerials on that one?
The wind erosion will be years to recover as well. The current valuation on the land is $460,800.
Oh, that's a lot of stuff.
This had no property damage as was noted from no disc area. Pictures only show burnt grass and fence damage. And since neither of those.
There's your video of it.
Since neither one of those are part of the land, it is unfortunate that hands are tied and we cannot make an adjustment to the assessed value.
Is that your motion?
Now, there's a comment section on here. Are we to fill that out or not?
Um, I guess maybe.
Lot, you're, and I'm asking for direction here. Loss of grass and fence only, not damage to the land.
What I did on mine, Jerry, just for reference, I put my initials and then wrote, um, basically that I agreed with the assessor's recommendation.
But yours was taking the buildings off.
Mine was buildings.
Um, is there something particular you think for Turk purposes that how that should be ordered?
How that should be stated in the comments section?
You're going to put something in the comment section. My preference would be to be a very simple explanation for the denial, basically that grass and fence are not part of the land or whatever.
Okay.
That way Turk knows why and they can focus on just that.
Yep.
We don't have to have a wide range of hearing on all kinds of things. We're just going to decide whether or not you have the power to deny.
So that is my motion is to not change the assessed value because the damage was to grass and fence only, not to the land.
Second. Aye.
Aye.
Oh, hey.
I have Form 425 from Ron and Mary Miller on property ID 0006850725. Further described as the southwest quarter of section one, township 14, range 26. Identified further as 156.34 acres more or less. This is, uh, petitioned as a, as land damage, 100% fire is in the, is the description of the damage. I will also note that Mr. Miller is from Brady, Mr. and Mrs. Miller reside Brady, Nebraska. The current year assessed value is $116,336. The pictures attached, uh, do certainly show fire damage as we've noted on others. And burning some intermittent cedars and, and in the background, some, some straight line shelter breaks, it looks like. Nevertheless, because of our limited ability to lend relief, I don't believe that our, we have the scope of latitude to, uh, compensate for burning the grass and the fence. There'd be my motion to leave this property's value at $116,336.
Second. Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Aye.
I have Form 425 for Richard and Sharon Pearson for parcel 0068508.65. The northeast quarter of section 17 dash 14 dash 26, 160 acres. The damage described as fire burned fences and grass in the pasture. Tractors disst up pasture will take years to be back to what it was before the fire. There is just one picture attached and it does show, um, a, a strip of burned, uh, including the fence. They did include a invoice estimate on what it would cost to replace the fence. Based on our conversation, uh, fences are not part of the land and the grass is considered a crop. Um, so my recommendation is, um, no adjustment. The current year assessed value of $115,200 will remain the assessed value.
Second. Aye.
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 I have the report of destroyed real property, Form 425 from a DL Partnership Limited. It is on 81426 all to parcel number 6850875. Says fire and fire damage in disc, disc areas for whole section fences and all due to the Betty's Way fires unusable. The wind erosion will take years to replenish this. Would be my motion that we leave the assessed land value the same. Does not exceed 20% per State of Nebraska statutes as defined in the instructions. That is my motion. Second.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, I have Form 425 filed by Celeste Nellm, Gothenburg, Nebraska. Property ID 708000. It is all of the section as described as 22 dash 14 dash 27. Damage occurred marked as land only, no buildings. Significant damage due to fire see attached. There are photos that are attached. I do see a windmill that is laying on the ground. Is that considered a structure?
We don't have values on windmills.
But that's an improvement, right? No.
We don't put a value on windmills.
You don't? It's not a structure, yeah. Well, that was my question. Answers my question. And I do not see anything that shows a disc area on this section. I see tremendous damage to the grasses growing on it, which we are considering a crop as per the instructions that we were given. Uh, fences are damaged as well, which are not part of the lands. Uh, the current year assessed value is $460,800. And it's unfortunate, but my motion is going to be not change the current year's assessed value due to the damage was the grass and the fence, uh, which are not part of the land.
Second.
Hughley?
Aye.
Lillard?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
One of the things I think I want to point out as well too, you know, most of these photos we're seeing are right after it occurred. When we went with Kent, I don't remember the date on those photos.
Um, I still.
But, um, we had some very, very timely rains and I think even some snow that occurred right after that. So we're very fortunate that, you know, you've seen some of the aerial drone footage that most of this stuff is covered with green grass is coming back. Fantastic. The blowouts obviously are not and the disc areas are thinner, but, um, they hopefully look a lot better than the photos we're looking at right now. Other than the trees.
May 29th.
May 29th, yeah.
I have a lot of the same pictures.
Yep.
Yeah, when you drove up Maxwell Road, you could see exactly right after that where the fire went right across Maxwell Road and you can't tell the difference now. I mean, it is beautiful green up there. But you can see exactly where it went through that field.
And you can see because you don't have your old bunch of grass growth.
Yeah.
It's, it burnt that, but.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Are you ready for the next one?
Yep.
I have Form 425 for Ronnie and Mary Miller, again from Brady. This is on property ID 0006885500. Proved described as the east half of the, uh, this is not real eligible. East half of, um.
East half excluding north 53 and a third acres.
Thank you. Excluding the north 53 and a half, 53 and a third acres of section 34, township 15, range 26. Otherwise identified as 293.34 acres. They're applying for the damage occurred to the land. Again, they note 100% fire. Current year assessed value is 208,973 with no improvements. My motion will be to deny an adjustment and remain at 208,973 due to the fact that we do not have the latitude to reduce from for grass and craft burns on the pasture and the fences.
Second.
Lillard?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Woodruff? Weems?
Aye.
I have Form 425 for Richard and Sharon Pearson on parcel 0068508.70. The west half of section 17, 14, 26, 320 acres. Uh, significant damage due to fire. Fire burned fences and grass and pasture. Tractors disst up land will take years to be back to the way it was before the fire. They also submitted a barbed wire fence replacement estimate. And two pictures of the property, um, probably taken pretty close to after the fire went through. There, not much left there except some scrub brush. The, the pictures I believe that are attached were probably taken February, March, when there wouldn't be much green anyway. Um, do we have flyover pictures of this parcel to see what it looks like now? We'll take a peek here. No. Okay. My recommendation is going to be based on established, uh, limitations for what we can do. Fences and grass are not considered part of the real property value. I'm going to recommend that we leave the current year assessed value, which is $230,400 in place.
Second.
Hughley?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Lillard?
Aye.
Let me read this one first now. Okay. I have a Form 425 for DL Partnership Limited. Parcel number 6850880. It's all of 191426. Fire damage fishes disc ground make this unusable due to Betty Way fire. Wind erosion will take years to replace. My motion that the current assessed value remain unchanged on this land as it does not exceed 20% per State of Nebraska as defined in the instructions.
Second.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Lillard?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye. Okay, um, I have nine from, uh, Harry Haythorne. Do I handle them one at a time?
Mine have all been from the same person.
Okay. Okay, I have Form 425, uh, Mr. Harry Haythorne, Maxwell, Nebraska. Property ID of 0007074000. This is described as the south half of the southeast quarter of 10 dash 14 dash 27, 80 acres. Do we have any, uh, photos of that as far as whether there is disc damage to that property?
I don't think this specific section, but I think there were some of the Goch's that borders it. I'm not sure why we got some of the Goch footage instead of the Haythorne footage. But, I mean, Booker said that the disc ground basically all kind of looked the same. I don't think there's anything of Haythorns up there for some reason.
This was Betty's Way fire, grass. Uh, there are no pictures. Well, there's only one photo that just shows where this property sits in relation to where the Betty fire, Betty's Way fire went through. And, uh, it looks as though, uh, that's all the visuals that we have. Doesn't appear as to we have drone footage of this either to tell if there was disc damage or not. We'll hope just a minute to see if you can find that. But being just an 80 acre little section, little portion of this section, if there was a lot of disc damage there, maybe we could get into that 20%, possibly.
It looks like Booker said that he thinks all the disc stuff they saw was basically maybe too swast, too 16 foot halves through there.
That's not going to constitute 20.
So there's, uh, they do have some still, still photos. I don't know what section that's taken in, but they did have some still photos of the disc property and that's what that looked like.
I had her to Jerry's question about reading those parcels in. If, if we're basing the denial on the fact that it's essentially burn a crop and fences aren't covered, can he read all those parcels in? Or do you recommend we stay with the format?
My recommendation would be to do it individually specifically because if they get sent down to Turk, if you go, one decision of the board that covers nine parcels, all nine are coming back, not just the one.
Okay, thank you.
That would be the only.
Yeah, that's good. Okay. Good to know. Well, uh, it appears as though we don't have evidence that there was damage to the land as per disc area, even on this smaller piece of ground.
The Haythorn ones had, he had no photos.
Okay, so it's going to be, and this was, current year's valuation was $57,600. My motion will be to not change the valuation as per instructions from the State of Nebraska in regards to damage to the, from the fire. The grass is considered a crop and the fences are not considered part of the land. It's my motion.
Second.
Weems?
Aye.
Lillard?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Woodruff?
I have Form 425 for, again for Ronnie, Ronnie and Mary Miller at Brady. This property ID is three zeros followed by 68875. And I think there's a point 00 there. Is that correct?
Yep.
And this is further described as the southeast quarter of section 35, township 15, range 26, 160 acres. They indicate the damage occurred to the land, fire being the culprit. And, uh, in the description said 40% fire damage. Now, uh, Julie and staff, they list the land at 118,424 current value and buildings at $2,400. For a total of 120,824. These values remain the same today. So no building damage.
The, there was no mention of it and I don't see any photos of building damage. So I assume that the building there was still okay. I think it's a cattle shed.
The old amount of building?
Yeah, it's kind of dark, but it's, yeah.
Okay. And that's a current recent photo or?
2019, I think maybe it was last.
Well, I'd be, I'd be shocked if it burnt down a steel building, but.
And I, I, my thoughts are if it would have damaged the building, they would have probably mentioned and took a picture of the structure.
Yeah, but these are the. Yeah, but these are the values as of today, correct?
Yep.
Um, well, they do, they do show pictures of the range and I see horse burned area and car tracks from a vehicle of some kind and of course burnt fence posts. But again, because our, I don't believe our guidelines allow for any discounts on what is essentially a crop, being the grass and unfortunately the fences are not dieted. So my motion would be to deny this petition for reduction in value and leave the land at 118,424 and the buildings at $2,400 for a total of 120,824.
Second. Luller?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Luller?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Luller?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
I was just waiting. No?
I'm sorry.
All done?
Okay.
Sorry, distracted. I have four, Form 425 for Richard and Sharon Pearson on property ID 0070750.00. All of section 12, 14, 27, 640 acres. Significant damage due to fire. Fire burned up fences and grass and pasture. They did submit a invoice for replacement of the fences and about four pictures of the burned grass shortly after the fire. Based on our determination that fences and grass are not part of the property value, my recommendation is that we leave the current year assessed value of $460,800 in place.
Second.
Hugley?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Luller?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Luller?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Luller? Aye.
Okay, we're going to go back to the one that started this whole mess. This is a report on destroyed real property, Form 425 by Morgan Fletcher and Jen. Parcel number 71450. It's the northwest quarter and the west half of the southwest quarter of 341528. Says lost barn and outbuildings, lost trees, all ground burned in fire. Actually, Henry went back and looked at this. I'm going to have land remaining at 197,197 as the, does not exceed 20% of the current assessed value of the land per Nebraska instructions. As far as the buildings themselves, that will be reduced from 93,798 to $50,000. That removed the garage and the barn with loft that were lost in the Betty's Way fire and applied a 45% functional depreciation to the home. And that would make the total land and buildings $247,697. That'd be my motion. Second.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Luller?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
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 Woodruff?
Aye.
Williams?
The property ID is 7082500. Further described as the north third of section 27, 14, 27. Now, do we have a video of that one? While you're looking, I'll read the rest of this. Damage occurred to the land because of fire is commented. The damage is from the Betty Way fire, tire damage, fire, yeah, fire damage. Fence and disc ground make this property unusable. Wind erosion will take years to recover. Current value is $460,800 with no built, with no buildings, no improvements. Did we find a flyover on this one?
No.
He has one, he has one picture and of the disc area and I'm going to say that they made at least three, maybe four passes with the disc on, on the parcel. But if, if it's, if it only burnt the north third, I question whether we can get to 20%.
But they don't say anything about.
Any permanent damage because yes, they did disc it, but it's still topsoil and there's still some residual. I would like to see, I wish we'd have flown an aerial of this, but must have overlooked it. At any rate, it's, it's showing satellite imagery of the area burnt and disc and I don't think it would qualify for the 20% even if we.
They didn't say anything.
No, not to me. I'm sorry that we can't do it, but. My motion would be to deny the petition for induction in value and to leave the land at $460,800 with no improvements due to the fact that the grass is, is a crop destroyed unfortunately, but nevertheless a crop under the guidelines. And the disc area, I don't think would warrant a 20% of permanent damage. That's my motion.
Second. Luller?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
I have Form 425 for Richard and Sharon Pearson. Parcel ID 0110862.94. Part of the northwest quarter and part of the southwest quarter of section 9, 14, 26. A total of 143.52 acres. Significant damage to property due to fire. Fire burned fences and grass and pasture, burned corrals at place. Fire burned trees in our windbreak. Also had smoke in the house we lived in. They did attach a estimate for barbed wire fence replacement and several pictures of burned fence and grass and trees possibly. We determined this was probably around the corrals. And there's some more of the corrals. But there were no pictures of the house to.
There was not. And so there was no adjustment given to any smoke damage in there, so I don't know if you really should.
That'd be tough.
Well, and smoke damage in the house would probably be covered by their homeowner's insurance, correct?
Probably.
Yeah, that'd be pretty difficult.
Yeah. I, I don't see any, any evidence presented to support that. Again, I sure feel sorry for these folks losing pasture and corrals and, and trees, but we have determined that none of those losses affect the value of the property. So my recommendation is to stay with the current year assessed value. The land at 145,734. Buildings at 170,547 for a total of assessed value of $316,281.
Second.
Hugley?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Luller?
Aye.
Okay, so before I get confused, have, have we worked one for a Laura Sue Crowe and
I think.
Yep.
Yeah.
We worked those IDs yours, Ken?
Yes, right.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I did not initial it like I was supposed to and I didn't, didn't do my due diligence.
Okay, I just didn't want to.
I, I did the rest of it.
Okay, so, so.
I just dropped the ball there.
No, no big deal. Do you want to do it?
I can't.
Okay.
One of them might be my copy too, is it got a copy stamp on one of those. Are they both Sue Crowes?
Um, this one's a copy.
Okay.
This is the original.
Okay.
According to the sticky notes. So Joe signed it, so it all fell in the number.
Okay, there we go. This is a report of destroyed real property by DL Properties Limited, parcel number 6850967331426. West, northwest quarter.
Yeah, so that's the zero value there.
The, uh, they say the entire quarter is unusable, fire damage, disc area and fences due to Betty's Way fire. Wind erosion will take years to replace. We looked at the aerials. They also list 43,140 as for their buildings. Uh, would be my motion that we leave the assessed value as it currently is, as the, there's no proof of any damage to the buildings and that the damage does not exceed 20% of the current assessed value of the Nebraska instructions.
Okay.
That's my motion. Second.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Luller?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Okay, I have Form 425 reported destroyed real property from a Mr. Harry Haythorne, Maxwell, Nebraska. Property ID number 0007076500. Legal description is all of 15-14-27, 640 acres. Damage occurred to land and fire is what has been marked, burned grass. Current year assessed value is $460,800. Due to the constraints that we have, grass is considered a crop and the fence not part of the land due to the guidelines that we have been given. So regrettably, my motion will be to not change the assessment from $460,800.
Second.
Williams?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Luller?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Okay, this is Mr. Harry Haythorne again. This property ID is three zeros followed by 7078,000. Further describes all of section 18, township 14, range 27, 640 acres. Indicates that damage occurred to the land due to fire, Betty's Way fire burned grass. Current value of this parcel is $460,800 and no buildings, so total value is $460,800. My motion would be to deny based on the fact that burnt grass is a crop loss and not covered under the statute.
Second. Luller?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Luller?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Okay, I have Form 425 reported destroyed real property from a Mr. Harry Haythorne, Maxwell, Nebraska. Property ID number 0007076500. Legal description is all of 15-14-27, 640 acres. Damage occurred to land and fire is what has been marked, burned grass. Current year assessed value is $460,800. Due to the constraints that we have, grass is considered a crop and the fence not part of the land due to the guidelines that we have been given. So regrettably, my motion will be to not change the assessment from $460,800.
Second.
Williams?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Luller?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Okay, boys and girls, here's, we're, if I talk slow, it's going to be noon in a minute. So we probably ought to stop and get some lunch. Uh, we, Tammy will kind of be back and forth, but there's a couple people that have doctor's appointments, including Tammy at, or have other places they have to be, I should say, about three o'clock. So that would leave three of us to continue past that.